The Dickinson City Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. But the records show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the order of business. Mr. Winningham, are there any changes to the order of business?
Good afternoon. President Decker and Commissioners, there is no changes to the agenda.
Any questions on the order of business? Now I look for a motion on the order of business. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. All in favor of the order of business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that Commissioners wish to discuss? Hearing no discussion on the consent agenda. I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Move into... Item three, the administration and finance on our agenda. And the first item up is our monthly financial report for April. That'll be handled by City Accountant Maury. Welcome.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Starting off with our 1% sales tax collections, the red line is 2021 and the blue line is 2020. In April of '21, we're down about 20,000 from where we were last year, so about a... almost a 4% decrease there. Through the first four months, total in the 1% sales tax, we're down about 270,000, which is about a 13.3% decrease from the prior year. Just a reminder to the public, we showed this slide separately just because we collect our sales tax in separate funds, the 1% sales tax fund and the half percent sales tax fund. I also should remind the public as well that all these collections are based on a two-month lag, so the collections we're seeing in April were earned in February and submitted to the state in March before we actually received them in April. In our hospitality tax, again, the red line is 2021. We're down about 8,000 from where we were in April of 2020, so about a 10% decrease there. Four months total, we're down just under 60,000 altogether, about a 19% decrease from 2020. In our occupancy tax, on the red line, in April of '21, you can see we collected about 14,000, down about 8,000 in this fund as well from April of 2020, about a 10... or, excuse me, about a... that would be a 36% decrease from April of 2020. Our four-month total, we're down about 22,000 altogether, which is a 28% decrease from the prior year. In our oil impact revenue, again on the red line, in April of '21, we collected just under a million, about 990,000, down about 25,000 from the prior year, which is about a 2.4% decrease. Our four-month total, we're down about 682,000 altogether, which is a 15% decrease. In 2020, in 12 months, we collected about 11.2 million. If we stay at this pace and keep an even line, we'll be at about 11.6 million for the year. Moving on to our general fund revenues and expenses. So this is taken directly from the city website as of the end of... as of the end of April. So our benchmark, we should be shooting for about 33% with these numbers. On the chart on the left, you can see in our general fund, we expended at that point just about 31%, so we're doing it... we are ahead of where we need to be with our general fund expenses. Our general fund revenues, we collected about 42%, so we are ahead of where our benchmark is through four months. And then moving on to our enterprise funds, we have expended just under 25% of our enterprise fund budget through four months. And then in our revenues, we've collected about 31%, so just a bit under our benchmark on the revenue side, but we are under on the expense side as well. So with that, I'll do my best to answer any questions, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Maury. Any questions for staff on the monthly financial report? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on the monthly financial report.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion on the monthly financial report? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move into HR, and we'll have our monthly report from HR Coordinator Dominik.
And I have to apologize, I think I have the wrong month in your packet, and I have it printed wrong as well, so I have her bringing me a new copy. Is it possible to do number two, and then we can move to number one?
I guess we can. I mean, it's gonna be... no?
Uh, you sure?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just reports, so...
Yep.
So... Mr. Winningham? Can you drag out this thank you note?
I will... I would like to just offer a thank you note that was presented by one of our programs that received a grant from the city, and I'll just read it. It comes from Carolyn Erickson, who is the Prairie Senior Citizens Coordinator or Secretary and Treasurer for the Senior Citizens Center. And it's just, "Dear friends, a huge thank you for your welcome grant, $4,300 from the Dickinson City Sales Tax Grant Program. We're a very small but active group. We also house our Slope County Community Pantry. Since our building is over 100 years old, we also have plenty of upkeep." And she goes on to say that, "Thank you so much for your kindness and for your grant
All right. Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Mr. Dominik, you have the...
I'm ready. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioners and Mayor, I'm sorry about that. The first one on this hiring journal is the utilities manager. We're still on hold on that, looking to fill some other positions first before we open that position. We've been really busy with our seasonal positions. We did fill a seasonal paleo assistant for the museum, and that person will be starting next week. Three seasonal museum workers, we did fill those positions. Got one of them back from last year that was with us previously. We had a skilled service representative out at the solid waste department open, and we did fill that one. She's been with us for a couple weeks now. We have a seasonal code enforcement position open, and that is a returning seasonal employee as well. She has started this week. Engineering, we have one position left, our one position to fill in that department, and they are just kind of getting it posted. We didn't have much luck the first time getting any applicants for that position. Museum collections manager, we had a retirement there, so we actually opened that internally, and another candidate from inside the museum transferred over into that position. Solid waste laborer, we filled that position, and that employee started this week. We had a firefighter position, and that has been filled with one of our volunteer firefighters. Police officer, you know, as you know, that has been a difficult one to fight... to fill. We had testing and interviews just this week, so we're working at it. Had some in background. Limited our library assistant, we had two positions there, and those have been made offers, and they are in the background phase. Deputy fire chief, we did do the interviews for that, and an offer was made for that position. Code enforcement, we have that position open and are setting up interviews for next week, I believe. Solid waste recycling operator, we've got two open positions there. Communication specialist, two positions as well. Seasonal utility, we have three. We... honestly, we have several util... or seasonal positions that we haven't been able to fill yet, so we've got it... we've got those open until filled. So three utility laborers, five for buildings and grounds, two for forestry, three for street departments. But we have some background... or some in background, some interviews taking place this week. Environmental compliance specialist, that is a new position for Public Works, and that position has been opened and advertised. And then the last one is the seasonal tree data collection, which again, we're waiting for grant approval before we open that one. Any questions on any of our open positions?
Any questions, Commissioners? If you could, Mr. Dominik, if you could have somebody on your staff just email all the Commissioners...
The correct one, yes.
Correct one.
Will do.
So we can see that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Move into public safety. First item up is the... there's nothing from the fire department this evening, so we'll move on to police department. And Chief Dossinger, you have a report.
Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Commission. I'm before you tonight with the April monthly report for the Dickinson Police Department. For the month of April, we responded to 2,415 calls for service. Wednesday was our most popular day of the week for neighbor-related crimes. It wasn't Friday or Saturday, it was actually Wednesday. Those are most busy... busiest days. My most popular calls for service, our top five, we responded to 106 suspicious persons or vehicle calls, 79 speak with an officer calls, 71 paper and warrant services, 58 parking complaints, and 50 welfare checks. Our top five for cited traffic violations include speeding at 66, 15 K required citations issued, 14 no liability insurance citations issued, 10 failed registered motor vehicle, and seven no valid driver's license citation issued. For arrests, as you can see, it was led by warrant services with 66. Drug-related call... drug-related arrests were also very popular for the month of April, as well as refusals and DUI-related arrests. There are a total of 51 total accidents in the month of April. Our accident numbers continue to stay low historically compared to historical perspectives. There were four injury-related accidents and nine hit-and-run accidents in the month of April. There are a total of 543 traffic stops conducted, 314 warnings were issued, and 142 citations were issued. Behavioral health calls, we responded to 81 total calls for service. 50 of those were welfare checks, 18 mental health... direct mental health-related calls, five intoxicated subjects, and we responded to eight suicide... In dispatch, we responded to... or I should say answered, 805 911 emergency calls. They answered 4,680 non-emergency calls and had 1,098 outbound calls for service. In our dispatch center, there currently for the month of April, there were 10 working full-time dispatchers. Two had started the field training program within the dispatch center. One had completed their field training on April 26th. One is out on medical leave, and currently there were two open positions in the month of April, so they were very lean in the dispatch center for staffing in the month of April. Some tidbits from dispatch, obviously, the assisted Billings County and emergency notifications for the Midora Fire, they stayed very busy with that, and they have dispatched to multiple local fires and sent Stark and rural departments to mutual aid requests in other counties as well, so definitely the fire calls for service has kept our dispatch center very Other dispatch tidbits, they conducted presentations at Dickinson High School about being a dispatcher. They also presented to about 100 students in Battlefield about 911 services, and they celebrated National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the month of April. Our animal shelter, basically, our animal control division responded to 164 calls for service. They impounded 55 animals in the month of April, and they had released a total... total impounded 34 dogs. 20 of those dogs were returned to their owner, 10 were turned over to a rescue organization, and one was adopted. Three of those currently remain at the shelter for the month of April. They had impounded 21 cats. Eight had returned to their owner, 10 to a rescue, and three had remained at the shelter. So for a total of 55 animals impounded, so animal shelter stays very busy with incoming and outgoing animals. Training, we had officers attend a street crime school for three days, a school on policing in West Fargo. We had investigators attend a background school, which was held at the Public Safety Center. We had one officer complete a force science-based training, science-based training in reference to rapidly unfolding use of force encounters. We also had one investigator attend a criminal investigation space... basics course at the Law Enforcement Training Academy in Bismarck. We also had officers attend a traffic active protection strategies training at the Public Safety Center, which is based on problem-solving to reduce crashes in our community. Officer Proust and Officer Richard graduated from the Law Enforcement Basic Academy in the month of April, and we also had one... one of our officers, basically job style and go through SRO training, introduction training, to transition to being a school resource officer for the 2020... 2021 school year. Our criminal investigative division seen 40 new open cases, or you should say carried 42 open cases into the month of April. They took on 37 new cases. They seized approximately 151 grams of methamphetamine from a search warrant. They arrested a male subject who had vandalized two patrol vehicles, a Stark County Sheriff's vehicle, and a North Dakota Highway Patrol vehicle that was parked in front of their residence. They also had four call-outs for the month, three were burglaries, and one was an unattended death. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Chief Dossinger. Any questions for Chief Dossinger on his monthly report? Hearing no questions, Chief Dossinger, you have one other item?
I do, thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce to the Commission Lucy Meyer. Lucy Meyer is a University of Mary doctorate student. Lucy is completing an organizational leadership... systems leadership practicum, in which I'll be serving as her preceptor. Lucy will be attending various leadership meetings within the city of Dickinson as part of her curriculum. Some of Lucy's academic degrees, she has a Master of Science in Nursing Nurse Specialization Education from the University of North Dakota. She has a Bachelor of Science in Nursing from Dickinson State University, an Associate of Science degree in nursing from Dickinson State University. She currently is serving as an Associate Professor of Nursing at Dickinson State University, currently teaching in the Bachelor of Science in Nursing program. Lucy began teaching nursing for Dickinson State University in 2005. Lucy also assisted with planning, coordinating, and leading several service learning experiences to Guatemala within interprofessional faculty and students. She has a passion for volunteering and providing services to others. This time, I'd like to ask Lucy Meyer to step forward to the podium and introduce herself to the Commission, please.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Mr. President, Commissioners, thank you, Chief Dossinger. I'm going to be with Chief Dossinger for approximately 100 hours. Feel sorry for him a little...
[laughing]
...on various occasions, so you will see me throughout, so thank you for allowing me to do that. Do you have any questions of me?
Commission, any questions? Welcome aboard, and I know you're serving in a leadership role the way it is at the university, but happy that you pursue your doctorate in organizational leadership, right?
Right.
So...
Right.
Chief will, I think, will be a great proctor, so...
I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lucy.
I was going to make one comment for you, Lucy. Thank you for interviewing me for your program, and also I know how to get ahold of Aaron's mom.
All right. We'll move right into Public Works, and Public Works Director Zurov, you have an amendment for the mausoleum design.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commission. This amendment will allow GT Architecture to move forward with the new mausoleum and columbariums that were presented at the previous meetings. It will include the design and architectural, engineering, construction documents, the preparation of those, and also help us with going out for bid and construction administration of the project. There's no questions, Public Works staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Zurov. Any questions for Mr. Zurov or staff on the amendment to the mausoleum design agreement? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion on this amendment.
I do have a question. Where was the original... I'm having trouble going back to find our original agreement to see what we're amending. Could you refresh my memory when that came... when we approved that?
Normally, like some of the other... this is a little different than a engineering agreement, this is an AIE agreement, architectural. So there's a master service agreement that was approved previously, and that's when they started doing the preliminary engineering on... with... or the preliminary design on the mausoleum. I can sure include that, but there is a master service agreement with GT Architecture as far as an AIE document, so this is an amendment to that master... master's agreement.
And then this cost amendment, this is architectural fees? An increase in the architectural fees?
It's an increase with GT Architecture, which includes architectural fees. There will be subbing some engineering fees with Highlands Engineering. It'll be the preparation of the documents, design preparation, go out for bid, and a construction administration of the project.
Okay, so this is on the front-end work, and this is not the project itself at this point?
This is the whole... this is the rest of the project.
This is the project.
This is the project. So this will be all...
So by approving this $80,000, then we will see the project move forward into complete...
Complete.
Okay.
Yep. Preliminary design, final design, engineering services, construction documents, bidding, warding the bid, and construction administration.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? Now I look for a motion on the architectural amendment for the mausoleum.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Oderman to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, comments?
Any kind of timeline, Gary, on when the completion, possibly?
Yeah, we're hoping, and in that agreement too, estimated bid opening is to be in the spring of '22. So they get... moving forward now, and hopefully have the... work on all the construction documents, and it's always better to bid right away in the spring, early spring, and so that's our goal.
Okay.
I have one more question, I apologize. This is... in building the mausoleum, this is where we talked about how the expenses are... as we sell the plots, the expenses come back to us as a city, so it's essentially a neutral cost in the long run.
Long-term, you're correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Now we have a motion by Commissioner Oderman to approve, second by Commissioner Frederick. There are no other comments or questions, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Zurov, you have a farm lease?
Yes, this is an annual renewable grazing lease, a small 20-acre parcel near the Water Rock May facility. Annual renewal with David Anderson. I think it's $15 an acre for 20 acres, the total earning rent is $300. This isn't prime ground, it's kind of in a drainage, but he requested to have some grazing, and so we're moving forward with it. Public Works staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Zurov. Any questions for Mrs. Zurov on this farm lease?
Do we get some stakes out of the deal?
[laughing] That's not part of the agreement. I would have to refer to...
You want to amend it?
[laughing] Turney Wanko to change.
Sorry, I didn't...
It could be goats.
True.
all right. Any other comments or questions? Now I look for a motion on this farm lease.
I'll move to approve. I'll second it.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla, second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any comments, questions? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item up will go to planning, and we have a Patterson Lake Plan Unit Development. Ordnance number 1717 will handle by Planning Director Hadley.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commission. This is the second reading of ordinance 1717, as you stated. There hasn't been any public comment since the first reading. Staff would recommend approval, and we'll go on from there.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on ordinance 1717? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on 1717.
Mr. President, I move to be approved, second reading and final passage of ordinance 1717.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further comments or questions on the second reading and final passage of ordinance Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Hadley, you have the final plat for the Patterson Lake Estates addition.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This would be Resolution 17-2021. It is the corresponding plat that goes along with that first PUD that we just heard, so it actually will allow the lots to be created and sold. There hasn't been any comment, this was also heard in the April 21st meeting, there hasn't been any comment from the public since that time, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on Resolution 17-2021?
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion, questions on Resolution 17-2021? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Hadley, we have the Patterson Lake Plan Unit Development number two, and this will be ordinance 1718.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is the second PUD, they're non-contiguous, so that's why we had to do two of them. It's just west of the first PUD that you just heard. No public comments have been received on this item either since the first reading, and staff would recommend the second reading be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on ordinance 1718? Now I'd look for a motion on 1718.
I'd move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions on 1718? Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions on 1718? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Hadley, we'll just ask you to pause for a second. We have a 5:00 public hearing, and that is for the Chapter Two Ordinance Amendment for the Historical Preservation Commission, and this will be handled by Museum Director Furman. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. This is the second reading of an ordinance amendment, Resolution 1716. First reading was held on May 4th, 2021. I am not aware of any public comments that have been received, and so I would ask that the second reading be held and hopefully approved. Staff recommends.
Thank you, Mr. Furman. Any questions for Mr. Furman on 1716? There are no questions, this is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing. If anyone has any comments or questions on ordinance 1716, which is the Chapter Two Ordinance Amendment for the Historical Preservation Commission, please come forward, state your name, let us know you have any questions or concerns. If you are watching online, you can call into 701-456-7006.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
Again, this is a public hearing. If anyone has any questions about 1716, please come forward, state your name, let us know your concerns or questions. Again, you can call in and ask those questions, 701-456-7006. Anyone from the public? Does anyone have any concerns about ordinance 716, which is our Chapter Two Ordinance Amendment for the Historical Preservation Commission? Seeing no one in the audience has any concerns or questions, and hearing no one online, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Furman, do you have any additional comments?
No, sir.
All right. Not. Commissioners, do you have any comments, questions for Mr. Furman? Not. I would ask for a motion on 1716.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 1716.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further questions, comments for Mr. Furman? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This time, we will go to the public comments on the agenda, or items that are not on the agenda. So if you have any, please come forward, state your name, let us know your concerns, or if you have any other items that you wish to discuss with the commission. Same goes if you're watching online and you wish to call in, 701-456-7006. This is the time to bring forward any concerns or comments on the agenda or not on the agenda. Anyone wishes to make a public comment? Seeing no one in the audience has any items they wish to discuss with the commission, and no one online has any concerns or comments, we'll close that part of the commission meeting, and we will return to Mr. Hadley. Mr. Hadley, we had approved 1718, so now we have to go into the resolution for the final plat of Patterson Lake Estates Second Edition.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is, as you said, Resolution 182021. It's the Patterson Lake Estates Second Edition, which is the corresponding plat that goes with the second PUD. This will allow them to sell these lots and move forward and finalize this project. No comments have been received by staff from the public, and staff would recommend approval.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on this resolution? I have just one, and I just, I was, I meant to ask it in the last one. I don't know if you know, but I know we have a representative here from Park and Rec. How soon will these lots, the process, from our resolution being approved and the ordinances being approved, how soon will they be able to purchase the lots? What do you think the process?
The part I can answer is that as soon as this resolution is passed, we can sign the final plat, then upon recordation, then they can sell the lots, but I don't know their timeline, maybe.
So one time, as soon as it's-
30 days.
30 days, okay, 30 days. So once it's recorded, 30 days, okay. All right, any other questions for Mr. Hadley or Mr. Kramer, who is in the audience? Now I'd look for a motion on Resolution 18-2021.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Frederick to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Hey, Mr. Hadley, we have a rezone request.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is the second reading of ordinance 1719, and it's a zone change from Ag to RR, Rural Residential in our ETZ. It's going to allow the, the owner to subdivide into a six-lot subdivision, which is the next item on the agenda. This item was also heard at the last commission meeting, and there hasn't been any public comment since that meeting. Staff would recommend approval of this zone change.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on 1719? No comments, questions, I'd look for a motion.
I'll move to approve ordinance 1719.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla. Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Hadley, you have the final plat for the Grasslands Subdivision.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is a corresponding subdivision that goes with that last zone change. It's creating six lots in the Rural Residential zoning district now. Had to wait for the final action on this because the zone change had to be approved, otherwise we couldn't create these smaller lots. There hasn't been any comments from the public on this particular application since the April planning meeting, and staff would recommend approval of the Grasslands Edition and its Resolution 19-2021.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions on 19-2021? Hearing no questions or comments on 19-2021, I'd look for a motion.
I'd move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further questions, comments on Resolution 19-2021? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hadley.
Thank you, sir.
We'll move now to item 10, which is the commission part of our meeting. Commissioners, if you have any items you would wish to discuss, this is the time for you to bring them up. They are not on the agenda, or just a topic that you may have encountered during this evening that you wish to expand on.
Mr. President?
Mr. Oderman?
I was wondering if Mr. Winningham would, would share an update on City Hall and the Town Square projects, and how we're moving forward on those. That means I need to do it, right? So-
He's just wondering if you would.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean-
That's what I was asking.
You can say no.
Clarify, clarify. I don't think I could say no, so that's all right. Perfectly fine. I, I would like to give an update. There's a few things we can talk about as far as the timelines for City Hall, and what the, the process looks like, and so I'll share a few, a few items. I, I don't have pictures to display, this is sort of off the cuff, but I'll, I'll give you a, a quick rundown. For the City Hall, then, we're considering the new City Hall, which is the former American Bank Center located downtown. We have advertised for the initial, the initial bidding. On the, on the 5th of May, we did a second advertising for the bidding, just kind of going through the timeline. 12th of May, we had a, a second bidding day. We did a walkthrough for bids. We had a couple of companies that showed up to participate in the walkthrough, couple meeting, too. And then we, on the 19th of May, we'll have a third day of advertising for the bids. On the 26th of May, we'll do the bid opening, and then we will bring back the bid review to the one June commission meeting, and that'll bring us up to really the timeline. If there's any questions I can answer about the City Hall, I think we're, in the previous timeline we talked about, we have until one October until we would like to be moved into the new building. There is, there is some challenges with the timeline. I, I've, I've presented this before, it's a very aggressive timeline. It will be based on a company's willingness to come in and work with the city and do a rehabilitation. It is really considered a smaller project, it's an older building, and they would have to refit a few items. Those, we are going to speak to some of these details at the State of the City Luncheon hosted by the Chamber of Commerce on the 20th of May, and we will discuss in more detail what, what those plans look like. In essence, what those plans are is the public entry into the front side of the building and the, the layout for the commission in the area that, that we're, similar to where we're sitting it now. And there's a few minor edits to the, the public entrance in the front that would allow for better citizen support or service to the citizens as we walk into that building. And then there's a couple of minor edits with some office space, but generally it's considered a, a small rehabilitation. So that may be the, the reason why there's only a few companies that are willing to come in and, and put that kind of a, a bid together. But, but we're hopeful we'll get some good bids. Are, are we, are we going at it from a hard bid standpoint, or can construction manager at risk? My understanding is that all the projects that I think the city should seek are going to be considered, construction managers at risk. Okay. And so, and for this one in particular, for the City Hall, yes. That is a, that is a at-risk, so that when we receive those bids, we'll have something to really hold the timeline and accountability for. Okay. For the Town Square, I can speak in general, we had a, we had the architects come in and give us the last meeting, which was a very thorough meeting that essentially gave the commission the option to review the current plans, and then move forward with the second phase of the design, moving forward to what we would consider construction documents. That'll be forthcoming from the next City Commission meeting, where the team will come forward and give you another version of the, of the Town Square designs for final review. I'll just briefly look at the timeline for that. The 26th of May, we'll do design, it was a design meeting that's going to be hosted, and then we'll have the 23 June final design review. We will bring that forward for commission review on the 6th of July. The 8th of July, we'll do a, we'll bid the advertising, we'll do an advertising bid. We'll do bid walkthroughs on the 15th of July. We'll receive all those bids by the 5th of August with a, leading towards a 17th August commission bid review. That'll put us on the same timeline, which would be doing some initial construction, once the bid and approval is done, to get started with the actual breaking ground, even though it, it, there's, there's nothing there now. We, look, it appears that we've already moved forward, but that was essentially a, just demoing a building from existing deal for the, the new City Hall. So, subject to your questions, I can, I'll stand by for, for any answers I can give. No, that was helpful, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Now I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second.
We are adjourned.